Good evening and welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening, November 17th. I call this meeting to order. Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. Councilmember DS Nash?
Here.
Councilmembers Verko Guditsky?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Here.
Mayor Newsom?
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the deputy city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. On the agenda tonight, a community workforce agreement for city capital projects. We're looking for direction. We're having a presentation from Matt Fabry, the Public Works Director. Welcome, Matt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to present to this evening on this topic. As you mentioned, I'm Public Works Director. I'm joined up here at the table by Assistant City Manager Christina Horstberger, but it's definitely been a team effort getting this item together. And behind me, I've got Deputy Director James O'Connell, who I don't know has had an opportunity to be introduced to council yet, as well as Zach Rata from the City Manager's Office. And then we've got Engineering Manager Jimmy Vo joining us remotely. All right. So in terms of agenda or agenda this evening, we're going to go over a little bit of background of how we got here. Talk a little bit about the local history of community workforce agreements. Talk about some of the research that we did in terms of looking at other agencies that already have existing community workforce agreements. We'll talk a little bit about our history of bids on capital projects, some of the key issues for council consideration related to community workforce agreements. We'll talk about some of the local hire and apprenticeships pieces, and we'll do a couple of case studies that we thought would be of interest to the council, and then some of the approaches that council can consider in terms of pursuing this. And we'll talk about some of our recommended guiding principles depending on which direction council wants to go tonight. So before we get into it, I just will put up the questions that we'll be asking for council feedback. This was the same as what was in the agenda. Report number one, should staff attempt to negotiate a community workforce agreement with San Mateo County Building Construction Trades Council? And if the answer to question one is yes, does council concur with the recommended guiding principles for attempting to negotiate a community workforce agreement? And two, should the city pursue a project-specific approach based on a number of projects or a dollar threshold approach? And if it's a project-specific approach, should it start with five projects? If it's a dollar threshold approach, should the threshold begin at 5 million, 3 million, or 2 million? So in terms of how we got here tonight, the San Mateo County Central Labor Council came to the August 18th City Council meeting and made comments during the public comment period recommending that the council consider a community workforce agreement. Later that evening during the reports and announcements, council directed staff to explore community workforce agreements and bring it back at the soonest available study session. So that's what brings us here tonight. So we'll present the findings to council and get your input in terms of where we go next. So just starting at the basics in terms of what is a community workforce or project labor agreement, they're similar, but community workforce agreements are broader in scope and generally apply to more projects meeting certain criteria, whereas project labor agreements typically apply to a single project. So a community workforce agreement would apply to a range of projects or projects that are over a certain dollar threshold. And they're generally agreements between labor organizations and a public agency. They establish the terms for construction projects that meet these certain criteria in terms of what the CWA is applicable to. And they're typically crafted to achieve some sort of social policy goals through criteria for local hiring or access to apprenticeships. Typical elements in a community workforce agreement include standards for wages and benefits for workers, provisions that prohibit workers from engaging in any kind of strikes or work stoppages or slowdowns, requirements that contractors hire workers who are referred from union hiring halls, except for minor exceptions for what we call core workers, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, requirements that non-union workers pay dues or fees to the applicable union while employed on the project, and typically include dispute and grievance resolution procedures. It's different from collective bargaining in terms of collective bargaining is agreements between individual unions and contractors, whereas a CWA or a project labor agreement is between a public agency and a consortium of different craft unions. If the city had a community workforce agreement, it would be included in the bid documents for projects that were relevant to it, and it would apply to all bidders and subcontractors on those covered projects. Community workforce agreements and PLA's supplement or supersede existing collective bargaining agreements, but they require compliance with the master labor agreements of all the craft unions. In terms of how CWAs and PLA's evolved, they were initially developed for mega projects, and they'll be include things in the area like San Francisco International Airport or Port of Oakland. These were projects that exceeded $1 billion. But gradually over time, they've been applied to smaller and smaller sized projects, and now they've gotten to the point where they're often applied to projects as small as 500,000 to $1 million. And they're increasingly used to achieve these local hiring and social equity goals that I mentioned. In terms of the research that staff did, we looked at quite a number of agencies that have either PLA's or community workforce agreements. You can see sort of the spread of things that we looked at here on the map. The one that's not pictured on the map is Watsonville. We'll talk about that one a little bit later. And this included both sort of peer agencies that are municipal, local government, as well as entities that are more special districts or like the Community College District or San Francisco Airport. When we looked at these agencies examples, we saw that some of them had different approaches. Some of them have dollar thresholds. Some of them have a project-specific approach. So just for example, at the low end of things, we saw Berkeley has a project threshold. Their community workforce agreement applies to any project over $500,000. At the higher end, we saw San Mateo County that just recently approved their community workforce agreement. So starting in 2026, their agreement will apply to projects that are $3 million and above, and that gradually ratchets down over time, down to 1 million in 2029. There were a couple of entities of note like Mountain View and the Community College District that have what we call a project-specific approach where they applied the workforce agreement to a set of specific learning projects. Mountain View had five specific projects and Community College District had nine learning projects. And down at the bottom there, Watsonville was also a pretty low threshold. We'll talk about that one as a case study, but that one was just rescinded by the council a couple of weeks ago, and we'll talk about why. Some common exclusions that you'll see in community workforce agreements is often there'll be exclusions that it doesn't apply to work that is performed by agency staff. It would exclude often maintenance and small projects, sometimes specialized work we've seen is carved out, which could include utilities or paving or very complex water and wastewater type projects. We've seen exclusions that ensure that if there are federal, state, or other agencies with grant funds that prohibit community workforce agreements, that those projects would be exempted so that the agency doesn't lose out on their grant funding. We've seen language, excuse me, that allows for when there's projects that only have one responsive bid, that it could be rebid without the CWA or PLA provisions. We've seen generally that most of these are time limited on the three to five-year timeframe in terms of the duration of the agreement, and they often include a termination clause that would allow an agency to terminate that with notice. When we talk about dollar thresholds, they're important for certain reasons. One is that when you have a dollar threshold, it ensures that smaller local contractors or subcontractors still have opportunities to bid on city projects that wouldn't otherwise because of the CWA or PLA provisions. So that would mean that projects that are lower than the threshold are still available to non-union local contractors, which is typically what we find is that you have a lot of the smaller entities or non-union. And this applies to a lot of specialized and non-union smaller contractors. It also allows small businesses that are more inexperienced with the compliance requirements that go along with the community workforce agreement or that don't have the staff to deal with the administrative documentation that goes along with that, that gives still gives them an opportunity to bid on public projects. But also, you know, as the thresholds get lower and lower, it starts to cause challenges in terms of making sure that city projects are not delayed or become too expensive due to a lack of bids from responsive responsible contractors. And what we see is that usually the smaller the projects, the fewer the subcontractors. And so there's, it results in fewer entities that are bidding on those projects, and we can often see higher bid amounts. And we'll talk about that a little bit with the Watsonville example. So we dug into our project bid history over the past five or so years, going back to 2019 and sort of through now in terms of projects in 2025. And so this chart shows the number of projects that were put out to bid that are over $2 million in the blue bars for each year. And then the orangish bar shows the average number of bidders that we got on all those projects. And so you can see in 2019, we had nine projects that were over $2 million with an average of 5.4 bidders per project. So you can see in general, we've ranged from, you know, three to nine projects per year, or I guess in 2021, we didn't have any, probably an artifact of COVID, that's three to nine projects and ranging from, you know, three to five or so bidders on each project. We did exclude some of the clean water program projects because they did not necessarily follow the city's standard bidding process. And what we found is that there's 119 total projects have been put out to bid since 2019. Thirty-four of them were greater than $2 million. In recent years, we've had strong level of contractor interest, especially on our street and transportation projects with as many as 10 or more firms bidding on some of the projects. And overall, we've done pretty well in terms of our engineering cost estimates being pretty closely aligned with the actual construction bids, averaging within a few percent across all projects. We have had some instances where we've got larger variation on individual projects, but that is, you know, typical on projects given the differences in scopes and condition and the complexity of the projects. One of the issues that we've seen in terms of community workforce agreements is what we call this double benefits issue. And this is where there's a requirement that non-union contractors have to pay what can be duplicative benefit contribution costs, whether they're workers or union or non-union. So there's a requirement that they pay into the union benefits pool for their workers, whether they're union or non-union. So they may already be paying benefits to their non-union employees, and then they would have to pay into the union benefits pool on top of that, even if their employees would not be eligible to receive any of those benefits. So it can create a financial disadvantage and potential bid deterrence when you have these additional costs that are borne by the contractors. And in general, prevailing wages already cover most of the wage standards, which are required for all projects, or at least all projects over, I believe, $25,000 or small maintenance projects of 15,000. And then there's typically core worker provisions that this requires that contractors use the union job referral system for much of the labor rather than having their own standing core workforce employed by the contractor. There's typically exemptions that allow for a certain number of core employees. Often we'll see five core employees allowed per contractor, but there's often a requirement that there be, you know, one hiring hall worker for every core worker that you have. And so this can be a discouraging factor in terms of smaller minority-owned firms. Then there's usually pieces that have local hire and apprenticeships provisions, and so agencies can set local hire goals or and/or apprenticeship program goals to give preference like to local residents or targeted workers who might be disadvantaged. We list some examples there. We have heard from some of the agencies we talked to that these local hire goals can often be difficult to meet. And it's typical to have a required apprentice with additional apprentices required on a project based on a dollar threshold. So you might see one apprentice for $1 million, and then every $1 million above that, you'd have, you know, another apprentice requirement to have apprentice on the project. And there's often a minimum percentage of required apprentice work hours on the projects. So in terms of some case studies that we thought would be helpful to look at, we just wanted to highlight San Mateo County, which was recently adopted by the County Board of Supervisors. As I mentioned, this applies to all public works projects greater than $3 million in, starting in 2026. And then that goes down over time, declining annually to $1 million in 2029. They do have an annual CPI adjustment, so those dollars would be adjusted by Consumer Price Index. And their agreement has a five-year duration and applies across all departments. So it's not just, in the past, they've had public works, project labor agreements for specific projects. So this is an example of a threshold, dollar threshold type approach. Over on the right, you've got the city of Mountain View, and that was where they adopted a project-specific approach where their community workforce agreement applied to five specific pilot projects that you can see listed there. And they set that up as a learning period where they could see how the community workforce agreement worked in practice and if it impacted them in terms of the cost of projects or challenges in getting bids, so that they could, you know, learn from these five projects and then revisit whether or not they wanted to expand it beyond that after that timeframe. And then at the bottom, we wanted to talk about the city of Watsonville. And I will acknowledge that Watsonville is a little bit different from San Mateo in terms of they are a little bit geographically isolated compared to San Mateo, and that may be part of their challenge. But they had a project labor agreement that applied to all projects over $600,000 back in 2014. And when we talked to their staff, they said that they've had a real challenge in getting projects delivered because they would either get no bids or they would get one bid that would be significantly higher than what their budget was. And so their council actually just rescinded their project labor agreements earlier this month. And I think they're directing their staff to work on bringing it back with a threshold on the order of 1.5 million, and they want to limit the project types that it would apply to, recognizing that they have some important utility and wastewater type projects that they need to get delivered. We also wanted to highlight some lessons that we've learned on our single project labor agreement that has been applied to the wastewater treatment plant. So in talking with our contractor out there of some of the things that they've learned from this is, you know, one of the things that we didn't have in the project labor agreement was specificity on things like whether you pay for tolls for people coming across the bridge. If we have a parking lot like we do for the treatment plant where people have to walk 15 minutes to get to the project, that suddenly that's paid time. And so you end up having a reduction in your overall labor hours that are working on the project because of some of the things in walking to and from parking lots. I think we had some challenges where the, it was not clear whether or not the PLA superseded other union agreements. And so there was some, you know, disputes that arose out of that lack of specificity. We had challenges in terms of preferences for bringing on workers that are local, and often we had challenges, especially with the type of work we were doing on the wastewater treatment plant project where we were installing very large piping and things like that, that some of the local union folks did not have experience with that, and were not qualified to do that. And so some folks would come out and they'd get sent home because they weren't qualified to do that. So I think we had better luck when we were able to pull from some of the halls that were further away where some of the folks that work on the things like the refineries that had experience with doing that type of work, that we had better luck than that. So I think that this is highlights just sort of the challenge in terms of goals of wanting to really support a local workforce, but then also not putting ourselves in a position where that local workforce may not be there in terms of overall quantity of workers or training and things like that. And so that goes to the next bullet there where there's, I think it would be helpful if there was requirements that there be data reporting from the unions in terms of how many people really are available, what are their certifications, what's their safety training, things like that. And I think there were a lot of things related to the treatment plant that were not sort of things associated with building the treatment plant. There would be things like servicing porta potties or doing stormwater pollution prevention and dust control and things like that, that all of that stuff under our PLA agreement had to be union. And so there is recognition that maybe there are certain things that could be carve-outs, that could be non-union work that would maybe not be associated with building a particular asset. And so there's, you know, you could consider things like an 80/20 rule in terms of 80% union and 20% non. So those are just some of the lessons that we learned on the treatment plant project. And so I think just overall for council's consideration, thinking about sort of the specified projects approach in terms of a controlled rollout to determine how this really works in practice, in terms of how does it support local contractors, how does it affect the city in terms of project costs, how does it support apprenticeship programs, how does it impact city staff in terms of administration, as opposed to the threshold model, which means that this would likely be applicable to more projects, would require probably more support from city staff in terms of administering that. And a focus on a smaller number of projects potentially can give an opportunity for a more data-driven evaluation as to whether or not we're achieving the council's goals in terms of benefits and also looking at the challenges. So those are things for council to consider in terms of giving direction on which approach to take. In terms of the administrative impacts, we did learn that administering community workforce agreements can be administratively burdensome. Some of the larger agencies have dedicated staff that that's their full job is to administer these programs that deal with things like the required meetings with the labor groups, compliance tracking and reporting. There's often a joint administration committee that has to be formed with city staff on it that would work closely with the Building Trades Council to monitor projects that are under construction and talk about what projects are coming, work on, you know, the bidding situation and which trades work on which pieces of the project. So there is the potential that a focus on a smaller number of projects would allow for gradual implementation and tracking of staff resources as opposed to just jumping in without necessarily knowing what those impacts would be. So if council directs staff to move forward with trying to negotiate a community workforce agreement, we thought that there were some guiding principles that would be helpful for us in terms of going into negotiations that we thought we'd like to get council's feedback on. So regardless of whether council wanted us to go with a project-specific or a dollar threshold approach, we think it would be important to prioritize a data-driven analysis that really focuses on whether or not we're achieving the desired community benefits, maintaining the flexibility for workforce sourcing, just, you know, highlighting some of the issues we've seen on the treatment plant that there's a goal, I think, to focus on local workforce, but not putting ourselves into a position where we can't get the labor that we need or the, or the labor that's been trained appropriately for the type of work, focusing on prioritizing efficient use of staff resources for administering a community workforce agreement, making sure that if we do this, that we do not have a negative impact on timely project delivery and being cost-effective in terms of delivering those projects, ensuring that disputes between labor groups in terms of, you know, which labor groups work on which part of the project, making sure that those disputes get addressed directly by those parties and that the city is not the entity that has to resolve those disputes, ensuring that if we do have grant funds that limit or prohibit the use of a community workforce agreement, that we not be at risk of losing those funds. So having provisions that would allow us to continue moving forward and bidding projects if we had grants that did not allow community workforce agreement. We recommend including a termination clause so that the city has the ability, if things were not working out the way that they expected, that they had the ability to terminate with notice, and then providing staff the authority to negotiate potential agreement to ensure that these guiding principles are represented. So those were the things that we thought were important for council to consider in terms of if we go forward with negotiating, that they consider the, council consider these guiding principles to help staff in terms of that process. And that brings us back to the questions, and I'll repeat those once more. One is should staff attempt to negotiate a community workforce with the San Mateo County Building Construction Trades Council? And if yes, then should staff attempt to negotiate? I feel like that question is mixed up there. Let me just, yeah, sorry, we got a typo there. So number one, under, if the answer to question one is yes, then does council concur with the recommended guiding principles for attempting to negotiate a community workforce agreement? And then two, should the city pursue a project-specific approach based on a number of projects or a dollar threshold approach? And if it's a project-specific approach, should it start with five projects? If it's a dollar threshold approach, should the threshold begin at 5 million, 3 million, or 2 million? And with that, I believe we will turn it over to council.
Can we get it to the right question slide, maybe to slide number two, please? Because the other question in there is just that, would the council approve of staff's guiding principles in any negotiation, which is a big point for staff?
Thank you for a great presentation. Before we move on, let's open it up for public comment. Do we have requests for public comment?
Yes, Mayor Newsom. If you wish to speak on this item and you are participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. If you join us in person, please provide me with your request to speak form. Alrighty. I will be closing the request to speak period now.
Bring them up if you got them. Sorry, I know there's a few people holding out.
I'll give, I'll give you guys one minute.
How many online?
Mayor Newsom, we have a total of 15 requests to speak on this item. Per rules and procedures, there will be a time limit of two minutes. 16 requests to speak.
Any online or all in person?
We do have 13. We do have 13 in-person and three online in a remote environment. Our last speaker in our in-person environment will be Anthony Visuso. And in our remote environment will be Amy Ochuro. Oh, all right. This is the last one.
Last call. Okay, thank you.
To ensure we get to all our public comments in our timely manner, when I call your name, please line up to my right. And I will start by calling the first three speakers in our in-person environment. Our first speaker is Bart Pantoja, followed by Ethan Lester and Marcus Alvarez.
Mayor, council, oh. I was gonna try to get a little extra time. Evening, Mayor, council, W. Mayor, council members, staff. I'm here and I speak on behalf of the Building Trades Council. We are 10,000 men and women working in construction in San Mateo County, of which many reside here in the city of San Mateo. I want to acknowledge the leadership of the city council and staff for their heatfulness to city council's desire to utilize a CWA. It is the leadership of elected representatives like yourselves that invoke economic growth. You maximize tax dollars by putting those dollars to work for the people while executing your fiduciary responsibility. And a CWA is a great tool to get that job done. CWAs, also known as PLAs, are being utilized for public work in many cities, school districts, infrastructure projects in the Bay Area, California, and across the country. So much so that there are many studies and reports on the outcomes of projects with our, that are built with or without a CWA. The most recent study I have discovered is a research article that analyzed 312 public projects in Sacramento County. And the result was that the projects being built using a PLA were built up to 17% faster than those that were built without. As you will hear from my Building Trade fellows, there are many proven benefits gained from the use of a CWA. I want to thank my brothers, brothers and sisters for being here tonight to express your comments. For those of you that work in the construction industry, please stand up. Tonight, you may also hear some opposition to a CWA. And to be clear, although our fellow construction union has left our collective effort to promote training, livable wages, healthcare coverage, labor law, and prevailing wage compliance through the use of a workforce agreement, our councils opted to make sure the agreement allows their participation to all and have all these benefits for all construction workers. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ethan Lester, followed by Marcus Alvarez, and followed by Robert Suarez.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Ethan Lester. I'm with the operating engineers. We cover 49 counties in Northern California, Utah, Northern Nevada, and all of Hawaii. We have PLAs and CWAs in every state. We are part of the San Mateo Building Trades. I am a resident of San Mateo County. I'm support, I am in support of the CWA, AKA PWA, PLA, excuse me. County workforce agreement, project agreements ensure projects are completed on time and within budget. A CWA is an insurance policy for us taxpayers guaranteeing that all infrastructure is built by competent workers trained to deliver the highest standards of safety and craftsmanship. Projects built with CWAs have been found to be completed up to 19% faster than those without CWAs. Studies show that projects covered by CWAs are completed on time and within budget. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcus Alvarez, followed by Robert Suarez, followed by Anthony Juanes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Marcus Alvarez, and I am the organizer for the Elevator Constructors Union. And I want to speak clearly about project labor agreements or community four-course agreements and the noise you may hear from the carpenters' union leadership. Our Building Trades Council represents 14 international unions and 20 local unions covering 50 skilled crafts. Every craft, from electricians, operating engineers, ironworkers, laborers, plumbers, cement masons, elevator constructors, and yes, carpenters, has a place on the PLA. There is no exclusions in a PLA, none. The carpenters' leadership will claim they are being shut out, but the truth is they have chosen to exclude themselves. For over 30 years, the carpenters have worked side by side with other trades on PLA projects across the region, SFO, San Bruno Park School District, San Mateo Union High School District, Hachechi, and more. No one locked them out, their leadership walked away. And they will continue to work on many of these same PLA projects today. The narrative, the narrative that you hear that claims of exclusion and unfairness is misleading and it, and it erases the reality of their members already benefit from PLAs and they have for decades. While PLAs deliver real value, meanwhile, deliver real value. Clear rules and no striking, no lockout guarantees, projects finish faster, safer work sites with fewer injuries, oppressed pathways for local residents, veterans, women's, and disadvantaged workers, and stronger local hiring and economic benefits. PLAs do not devise, they unify. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Suarez, followed by Anthony Juanes, followed by Jada Osarslin.
Hello and good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Robert Suarez, and I am a mechanic with Local Eight, IUEC Local Eight, and we're also part of the Building Trades in San Mateo. And I am in support of the CWA or the PLA here for San Mateo. CWAs establish market competitive wages and safe working conditions that attract skilled workers. Workers covered by PLAs also earn higher wages and are more likely to have healthcare coverage. And they also result in fewer construction workers living in poverty and having to, what was it? They also, CWAs strengthen public budgets because they mean workers are contributing more in income taxes, sales taxes, and are less likely to rely on government assistance like SNAP or Medicaid. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Juanes, followed by Jada Osarslin, followed by Trevor Long.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Anthony Juanes, and I represent the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades. We have over 11,000 members of painters, drywall finishers, glazers, and floor layers, many who live in the county of San Mateo and the city of San Mateo. I myself have been a resident my whole life in the city, in the county of San Mateo with 41 years of union construction right here in San Mateo County. CWAs boost training, improve safety, and combat labor shortages. They boost investment in apprenticeship training for the next generation of skilled construction workers, invest in labor, joint labor management apprenticeship programs, which train seven in 10 construction apprentices in America. Workers trained in joint labor management apprenticeship programs having 31% lower injury rates and union work sites have 34% fewer OSHA violations. CWAs make contractors less likely to experience project completion delays due to worker shortages. Worker turnover is 33% less likely to occur when union labor is employed on infrastructure projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jada Osarslin, followed by Trevor Long, followed by Tom Traer.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. I'm an apprentice with Sheet Metal Workers Local 104, and I'm in support of a CWA with the Building Trades. I am a community member, and CWAs help provide opportunities for more local residents like myself to live and work in San Mateo. Apprenticeships are a pathway for us to the middle class, and CWAs help put apprentices of all trades to work and open up new apprentice spots for more people to have the same chances as me. Being able to work in my community also allows me to work closer to home, reducing commute time and allowing me to spend more time with my family, making childcare easier and reducing the cost of my commute. Thank you for your time and for considering the CWA.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Trevor Long, followed by Tom Traer, followed by Julie Lynn.
Hello and good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Trevor Long, and I represent the Glazers Local 718 out of San Francisco. We're a part of the Building Trades. I'm a resident and adjournment glazer. I'm also the business rep for the Glazers Local. And I want to come here to speak in support of CWAs or project labor agreements. CWAs expand local hire and opportunities to workers from disadvantaged backgrounds. CWAs can increase local hire and expand opportunities, I just said that, excuse me, promote the hiring of veterans and facilitate the hiring of registered apprentices. Union employers are twice as likely to offer diversity and inclusion training programs and twice as likely to have policies in place to recruit people of color and members of the LGBTQ+ community. 60% of state-registered apprentices are people of color, and a growing percentages of them are women. Safer job sites, family-supporting wages, and stronger local tax revenue. CWAs mean better projects, better jobs, and a better San Mateo. Let's keep building with CWAs because our taxpayers and our families deserve nothing less. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Traer, followed by Julie Lynn, followed by Anthony McCarthy.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to take a moment to address all of our apprentices that took and had of their night to come here and speak on behalf of this CWA. I really appreciate all of you coming out with all the Building Trades. Like I said, my name is Tom Traer. I'm with Sheet Metal Workers Local 104, and we represent over 12,000 workers in 49 counties in Northern California, up to and including San Mateo County. And I'm also a proud member of the Building Trades. I've been a resident of this community my entire life, and after graduating Carmon High School in 2001, I became a second-generation sheet metal worker. The trades allowed my family to stay in San Mateo County, which is really important to me. Most of my friends ended up having to leave the city because it's just too expensive for most people to make a living, but the trades allowed me to stay where I want to stay and work where I live. CWAs provide a vital pathway for people of all backgrounds into the middle class, and it's a great way for this city to show its commitment to helping build quality lives for the residents of this community. A CWA will help people in all crafts, providing good-paying jobs in San Mateo. It will open opportunities for the next generation of San Mateo's youth to join a trade and find the same good life that I found. Our apprenticeships are driven by our contractors, and without these jobs, we have no chance to bring in more young people into the various trades. As they say, a rising tide should lift all ships, and a CWA will do just that, not only helping all of the trades, but those benefits also branch out into the rest of the community. One of the most common questions that I get asked when I'm speaking to our elected officials is how can I help? This is how. This allows you to directly support the community, improve your commitment to the residents of San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julie Lynn, followed by Anthony McCarthy, followed by Devon Kuntz.
Ew, it's not built for short people. All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Julie Lynn, and I'm here on behalf of the San Mateo Labor Council's 105 affiliated unions and 95,000 working families countywide, including about 10,000 that call your city home. I want to thank you for engaging in this important conversation and for considering directing staff to begin negotiating a project-specific community workforce agreement with our Building Trades partners. I also want to express my appreciation to Alex and to your staff for the thoughtful preparation that brought us here tonight. You've already heard clearing-compelling testimony about what a CWA means for construction workers. I want to focus on what it means for the broader community. A CWA is one of the smartest tools a city can use to ensure that major public projects are delivered on time, on budget, and to the highest standards. Unlike prequalification processes that can be cumbersome and costly, CWAs have consistently been shown in independent analyses to keep costs stable while improving project outcomes. They reduce risk by preventing labor disputes, ensuring a reliable pool of skilled workers, and embedding compliance measures that protect the city from violations and delays. Beyond the efficiencies, a CWA is an investment in people. It secures good wages and benefits that help families stay rooted in the community, sets rigorous safety standards that keep workers whole and job sites efficient, and provides the option to include local hire provisions so that public dollars reinforce our local economy. The city's administrative role remains light, while the payoff for quality, for accountability, and for the workforce is substantial. San Mateo has the opportunity to move that, move forward tonight with a framework that supports workers, protects taxpayers, and delivers the kind of construction outcomes every resident deserves. By voting to direct staff to negotiate a CWA, you're not just approving a tool, you're choosing a pathway that builds stability, opportunity, and long-term value for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony McCarthy, followed by Devon Kuntz, and followed by Juan Espinoza.
Evening, Mayor, council, and staff. I am Anthony McCarthy. I'm an apprentice with Sheet Metal Workers Local 104, and I'm Building Trades. CWAs and PLAs are critical in providing safer job sites, and research shows jobs done with a PLA, CWA or PLA, show 31% fewer onsite injuries. As an apprentice, I value the chance to work in the community I live in, but I also want to have a safe job and get home to my family at the end of the day. And this CWA will help protect all the crafts on a job site. Thank you for the chance to support this CWA. I look forward to helping build San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Devon Kuntz, followed by Juan Espinoza, followed by Moises Villada.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Devon Kuntz. I am a third-year apprentice with Local 104, and I'm in support with the Building and Trades CWA. I'm a resident of, I've been a resident of San Mateo County my whole life, second-generation sheet metal worker, as my father's been in for 30 years, and he helped me get a job when I graduated high school. These workforce agreements provide the stability and dedicated employment that expand apprenticeship opportunities. The chance to earn while I learn has supported myself and my family with wages, healthcare, and a pension that I can retire someday with dignity. Your action today will grow this possibility to many others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Juan Espinoza, followed by Moises Villada, followed by Anthony Viscuso.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, members of staff. My name is Juan Espinoza. I'm a field representative of Carpenter's Local 217 here in San Mateo County. And I'm here to urge you to table this CWA because, as some members of the Building Trades already mentioned, we're not included in it. And that could be a big issue because they claim that everybody is included, and it's not the truth. So we need, we are proposing that you adopt instead a prequalification language that will help you vent the non-union contractors, the irresponsible contractors that come from sometimes out of state. It opens the window for them to, to get into these jobs. If we're not included, we also reserve the right at Local 217 to exercise our freedom of speech, and it's just going to create a big chaos. So please table this and look into our prequalification language, and we are willing to come back and talk to you guys about it and go from there. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Moises Villada, followed by Anthony Viscuso, followed by Emmanuel Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, and, every time, and council, and staff, everybody, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First of all, a couple points of clarity. We did not say bye, we're leaving the Building Trades. No, we did not throw the first punch. The San Francisco Building Trades kicked out our brothers and sisters of Local 22 out of the Building Trades. A harm done to one is a harm done to all. So in unity, we said, oh, really? So we withdrew from the Building Trades. You're not going to kick one of our locals, and we're not going to take it standing. Ever since we left, could you guys come back to the Building Trades? Could you guys come back to the Building Trades? No, we're not coming back. The few will not speak for the many. Also, PLAs do not grow unions. Organizing does. Agitate, educate, organize. Agitate, educate, organize. Go agitate, go organize the companies that are eating your lunch. Don't take work from the carpenters. Also, City of Birmingham, they found themselves at the quarrels of adopting a citywide PLA. They said, uh-uh, no, not for us. Their brand-new rec center was built not through a PLA. They couldn't be happier. Same thing with Foster City. They could have adopted a PLA for their new rec center that is being built, thanks to true testimony from the, true testimony that was spoken in that. that evening, they said, "No, uh, PLA is not for us." Uh, oh, project consultants, project consultants favor PLAs? Absolutely not. General contractors favor PLAs? Absolutely not. They're cumbersome, they're old, they had their time in place 40, 30, 20 years ago. It's time to move forward and adopt prequalification language that invites true, honest, good work, good, um, general contractors that help everybody grow.
Thank you.
Just a few.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Viscuso, followed by Emmanuel Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Anthony Viscuso. I'm a business agent for Local 16 Heat and Frost Insulators. I'm kind of a unicorn, and what I mean by that is that, um, I live in the Bay Area, got a house, got a car, got a wife, got a child, and my wife doesn't have to work, and that's because I'm a union insulator. I don't, I don't know too many people that have that opportunity today. Um, I was at a trades introductory program at College of San Mateo about six weeks ago, and I was talking to, um, about 35, 35 young, younger guys and girls that are just getting out of high school, looking to try to figure out what they're going to do next. I'm in there telling them about the opportunity that the insulators have, and, and we have, we already have 200 people on our out-of-work list, and it just happened that the day that I was giving my talk there, the following Monday, were signups. I can't tell you how many of those people I saw from that class down at our, down at our hall for signups wanting that opportunity. You know, I just, I just heard one of our brothers from the carpenters talk about how PLAs don't work, but yet you look at, you look at, um, SFO that's had a standing PLA for 30 years now, and they keep renewing it because it works. We all get along great, we all work on those. Great opportunities for more people to come into the trades. That's what we need you guys for, is to make sure those opportunities are there. That being said, I would urge you guys to, to approach the dollar threshold because that's going to make sure that you encompass more projects, which is going to create more opportunities. And then one thing I heard in the study session was about, uh, the possible double payment of, of paying, if you use non-union, non-union employers, they, they pay into healthcare wages, health care is that they might not get. However, um, if you use non-union, um, if you use non-union labor, they get paid, they get paid the total package, which means they get the healthcare, but a lot of times they don't have healthcare. So later on, when they do get injured, they end up going and relying on, on the county hospital anyway, so the taxpayers are paying for it twice. So in case that was missed, I just wanted to bring that out. So I encourage you guys to go for the dollar threshold and please, please decide on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker in chambers is Emmanuel Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and Staff. My name is Emmanuel Sanchez. I represent the Ironworkers Local 377, and we are part of the building trades. I am a resident, I am a journeyman, also a business agent with the Ironworkers. Uh, CWAs promote predictability, coordination, and efficiency on infrastructure projects. We will avoid strikes and lockouts to ensure an uninterrupted supply of qualified labor. We will provide construction management tools for planning projects, controlling costs, and ensuring workforce, workforce stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving to our virtual environment, our first speaker will be Eric Kristen, and our last speaker is Harvey. Please, Eric, unmute your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Eric Kristen. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction, where a statewide organization was formed 27 years ago by union and non-union construction firms to oppose discriminatory project labor agreements. Tonight, some simple questions. What problem is this new bureaucracy and supposed solution seeking to remedy? You've received almost five bidders on average for your projects, according to staff. Why would you decrease that number with the PLA? Watson Bill's bidders were so few, they just banned their PLA. They were averaging less than two bidders per project. Their last project, which had federal funds, couldn't have a PLA on it, they received five bidders. Was the council aware that PLAs are the most divisive issue facing the construction industry today, banned in 25 states and 11 entities in California? Ask yourself why no union contractor will be testifying in support of PLAs. They are the ones that employ union workers, not these business agents pushing this nonsense. Why aren't they here testifying in support of it? Your staff admits thresholds are necessary to keep small, minority, and women business enterprises from being excluded from your work. They just admitted that these are a problem for any contractor, but they want the threshold to be higher so smaller ones can get in. That's problematic. Were you aware that 90% of local contractors and workers, according to Bureau of Labor Statistics, are union-free? You're going to exclude those people from bidding your projects. Have you conducted a survey of your contractors who do work for you to ask them about PLAs, like the East Bay Municipal Utility District or San Jose Unified School District did? When they asked their contractors who did work, they lost, they figured they would lose 50% of their bidders if they went with the PLA. How much will a PLA simply cost to oversee? Why would you consider any agreement that forces a non-union worker to pay into a union health, welfare, and pension plan they'll never invest in? That's wage stuff. Why is that even in a project labor agreement, except to exclude non-union workers and contractors? Why would you consider anything in this day and age of macro and microinflation? Why would you do anything to increase costs? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harvey.
Hi there. Um, my name is Harvey McKeon, and I'm a representative of the NorCal Carpenters Union. We represent 35,000 members across Northern California. Um, I don't want to get into the tit-for-tat of, you know, whether a PLA is better or whether prequalification language is better. I, I will say, prequalification language does expand the number of bidders that you have in any given project. Um, but what I really want to talk about is the framework for this negotiation. So that goes to question one of the Public Works Director's great presentation, and that talked about negotiating with the Building Trades Council, but I want to point out to Council that this body actually represents a minority of the crafts in any given project. As the Council studies its approach towards negotiating a potential CWA, the carpenters respectfully ask it to study carefully, who is the most relevant negotiating party in all this? The 11 crafts represented by the NorCal Carpenters Union make up the majority of the workforce on public projects. So to be clear, the Carpenters Union should be a standalone negotiating partner in this process. Neither the NorCal Carpenters Union nor any of its affiliated bodies or members of the Building Trades Council, the Building Trades Council is not authorized to negotiate on our behalf. They may be called the Building Trades, but we actually represent more trades. So we're not against CWAs, but we should have a dedicated seat at the table. And, uh, I want to thank you for your leadership in strengthening labor standards on public work projects. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker in our virtual environment will be Rich.
Hi, Rich Hedges. How are you doing tonight? Just wanted to tell you that I have a lot of experience of working in a trade. I was a sprinkler fitter for a number of years. I took my classes through the University of Pennsylvania. They were very dynamic, a lot of, of classes with tremendous amount of math, and, uh, I felt very, very, very lucky to be in a skilled trade based on where I came from. It was my way out of a very bad neighborhood, and with a, a CWA, you'll ensure that a number of young people who are trying to do better in their life will get into the building trades as apprentices like I did. I worked many, many projects that were both, uh, public works projects and private projects. I worked sometimes 115 feet in the air and did a lot of great work, uh, and had a lot of camaraderie with my brothers and sisters in the building trades. We all worked together and got along on the, on the, uh, uh, on, on, on the job. None of us withdrew from the AFL-CIO. We're all members in good standing, unlike the carpenters. So hopefully you can get this CWA going and set a good working life for everybody that works in the building trades, and the carpenters can take part, too, if they want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, and thank you to the public for coming out and speaking on this issue. As we close public comment, I will now open it up to questions, comments, and directions from the Council. Does anybody want to go first? All right, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Thank you, everyone who came to speak, and thank you, staff. I know this was a extraordinary request we made, and we appreciate the fact that you reallocated resources to get it done as quickly as you did and as thoroughly, because I think by having this information, we can make a better decision. Um, so a couple of questions I've got about, um, about this. I, I think just generally, I am very much predisposed to project-specific. I guess I should start out by saying I am in support of negotiating an agreement. So within that, I am more, uh, disposed to organize, negotiating a project-specific agreement versus a threshold, because I think, even though there are lots of other cities that have done this, this has got to be a learning experience for us, and I think we need to be as specific as possible. So I appreciate the project-specific. I know, um, when we talked about our, um, priorities in terms of building, uh, you know, we talked about, uh, what the Martin Luther King Center, we talked about both Resilience Center and the pool, Fire Station 27, the Lake Shore Recreation Center, the Central Park Recreation Center, the Senior Center, and I would love to, um, ask if we could give direction that says we would like to focus on specifics, because something like the Joe Inville Pool as an example is a really high priority, but I think there are a lot of other questions about what can we do different, given the environment? So, um, I'd love to be able to be specific about that, um, if that's okay. Um, number two, let me get my computer to work. Oh, okay, okay, great, thanks. Definitely agree that it has to be data-driven, and I would, I personally don't think we should be negotiating details of the contract from the DAS, but I think whatever the negotiation is, has to be very focused on what are we measuring? How is it going to be measured? How often will it be measured? And when will it come back to, be coming back to us? Just as we did with flood-free, I think it's really important that we do that. I definitely want to organize, uh, flexibility. I guess one of the questions I had, and I don't know whether this is a question for staff or for the Building Trades Council, uh, there was some concern mentioned during the presentation, during the public comments, about, uh, getting lower bids under a, a CWA, and I'm wondering why those lower bids happened? And I'm wondering if someone can talk about other cities and their experience and what we could do to make sure that under a CWA, that we do have, you know, the competitive number of bids that we're appreciating, we're enjoying now. So, is that a staff question? Is that a labor question?
That's just, you know, I would say it's a staff question, and I think in the guiding principles, you'll see, um, that we're looking at if there's just one bid, really rethinking about going out and alternatively, um, putting forward the project without the CWA, um, to see how that sizes up, um, to make sure that we have multiple bids on a project. Uh, the guiding principles is something that I believe if Council gives direction, will give staff, um, enough direction to go and negotiate along the lines of what you were bringing up today.
Okay. I guess I would just encourage that we look at what we can do before we get to that point. You know, so if there are, staff did a great job of looking at other cities, like Mountain View, that's going project-specific, do they have this specific guiding principle in their agreement? Or is there a reason, is there something that could be done in advance? So we don't even get to that, that point.
So it would be up to, I'd say, and for this labor group, it'd be Bart Pantoia. He'd be basically charged with trying to go out there and trying to get as many bids as possible. I'm speaking for Bart, I guess I'm seeing a thumbs up out there, but that would be the expectation, that's his job, uh, to be able to get people to the table to put bids in.
Okay. Yeah, because I think that's, that's how we demonstrate this is a great model. Um, you know, I also agree that, that competition disputes between labor and building trades, that is not for us. Um, I, I welcome everyone, but we want the best projects and the best labor. I'm also interested in how can we ensure, and how does it work, that we get as many apprenticeships in as possible? That wasn't really addressed in the presentation. Is there, how would that be handled?
Typically, from our research, and I'll defer to the team, too, because I don't want to have to answer all the questions here, but, um, usually there's a monetary threshold. I think the example in the agenda report was like for every million, you'd be looking at, um, adding apprenticeship. Could be different. I know that we'd have to do some more research and talk to, um, other cities, but there's also typically you have attorneys negotiating on behalf of the city, and they are well-versed in this area, too, and they could provide guidance as well, and that would all be specifics that would come forward in negotiation.
Okay, great. I would just love to underline, triple underline the importance of that for me, because this should be a long-term thing. And if we do project-specific, then how does, how does a termination clause work with a project that's, like, it, project starts or it ends? So, I, what am I not understanding? I would think that would be.
If the project doesn't move forward, say financially, if we looked at just, we didn't have the funds for it, then we'd have to terminate that project, um, specifically, and so it would terminate that single project within the list of projects that we'd have forward.
Okay, so we're talking about before a project gets going, if we just can't.
If we can't fund it, and we're not going to, or the Council decides to pivot and go in a different direction, not do that project, that's where you'd want to terminate that specific project that we have negotiated.
Right. So that, that makes sense. I think, you know, being specific about termination being before the project begins, because obviously if the earthquake happens and everything blows up, then, you know, no, no project's going to happen. So I think if that could be, just, that would be my understanding, that termination is regarding the project before it begins. Let's see, then, my computer keeps going out, sorry. Yeah, and I, as I said, I think that really I'm supportive of this because this gives us a chance to look at it from a holistic perspective and bring everybody together and do as much planning as, as possible ahead of time, so that once we start the project, it happens. And my last question, it happened successfully. My last question is, um, what would be staff's recommendation in terms of the length of the agreement? Because right now, if we're talking about these big projects like MLK Resilience, uh, Fire Station, Lake Shore, Central Park, and Senior Center, um, we're going to have to find a source of revenue in order to do that. We're not going to be able to fund it out of our existing budget, so that will add a couple of years. So I, I want to be able to give us enough time to get the, the funding and then have the project happen so we get enough learning.
So with project-specific, I wouldn't see it as time-bound, so to speak. Um, it's based off the project itself, and if we look at the list, uh, that you've put out there, I think it might have a slightly different list than what you might have out there, um, if we were to negotiate, but a lot of these, the useful life will have come and gone, and this city will, has an obligation, if you want to move forward, uh, to extend the useful life, you would need to, we'd have to work collaboratively to move a project forward. Maybe we don't do all of them, but I believe that especially when you look at MLK or a fire station, these are, um, facilities that would need to be, um, rebuilt or updated significantly so that it can serve our community for decades to come, because they are highly utilized right now.
And that's why I think we should focus on the major projects, so, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. So I am, in answer to your question, yes, I do, uh, recommend going forward to negotiate a CWA, um, and concur with the, the guiding principles, but I do want to make sure that, um, it's, the no termination is before the project starts and that we spend a lot of time really trying to make sure that the projects that ultimately are chosen are the projects that are going to serve San Mateo the best. So the more specific we can be, the better. Is that?
Just really quickly, staff's was, should it start with five projects? That's the question.
Yes, but I would, I was, I'm recommending the projects that I think it should be. Now, I would love to hear from my other Councilmembers.
Want to go next? Okay. Councilmember Fernandez.
Um, I want to thank everybody who is affiliated with the building trades and labor and the carpenters. Thank you for what you do as the kid of a union member who would not be where I am today without, um, without those benefits. I want to thank where I am today without, without those benefits. I want to thank you for what you do for working families every single day, and for spending your Monday with us, especially the apprentices who are still apprenticing, and probably have an early morning tomorrow as well. So a couple of questions, and I'm not sure whether I need to direct these to Mr. Pantoja as the head of the building trades, or to staff. But can someone address, and I know that my colleague said that she did not want to get involved in the politics situation, but I was, I wanted to learn more about how, if, if maybe Bart could address, how the carpenters could be part of this? You, you did mention in your remarks that the carpenters could essentially opt in. And so can you talk a little bit about, and then I believe that there are already preexisting agreements where the carpenters have affiliated with your agreements. So can you talk a little bit about how that works?
Sure, sure. So in older agreements, a lot of our beginning language said that only construction unions affiliated with the building trades could sign on to an agreement. We've modified that language, just saying a construction trade union can sign the agreement and participate. So we basically made it so they don't have to be affiliated to still sign the agreement and utilize all the workforce compliance, all the benefits of the agreement. And what was the other question?
That, that was it, basically, just the process. And so just to be clear, there are preexisting agreements and agreements that are currently in place, where the carpenters who are no longer affiliated with BTC are included in your, in your work agreements?
Yes. And we have some agreements that have been approved, and are beginning work in which they haven't signed, but their contractors are still working, and their, their workers are still working on it, they're just not signed to the agreement.
Okay. So they, they are, they are, they are included, but they don't necessarily have to like, sign official paperwork?
If they want to use the grievous procedure for, for compliance, for like, labor or labor power and work violations, if they want to use that grievous procedure, they would sign on to the PLA. But if they don't want to do that, and they want to go through the prevailing wage, DIR, and Labor Commission, which takes a really long time, they can do that, because anybody can do that, who is working on a prevailing wage project.
Okay.
So, so we got both.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. That's, I appreciate it. Thank you, Bart. And then, I want to make sure that I understand, and make sure that the carpenter representatives who are heard today, or know that they're being heard. And so if we were to potentially take up a pre-qual's item, would that be at Blue Sky next year?
So, I believe it was maybe a couple months ago, the carpenters were here, and under reports and announcements, this council went ahead and gave direction that if the council wanted to entertain the pre-qual, or the hard hat ordinance that the carpenters have, the Blue Sky would be the appropriate place to bring that up, and put it into the work plan, should there be three council members who want to move forward, put it, you know, approve that and direct staff to put into the work plan the following year, or in the new fiscal year.
Okay. So I want to make sure that I acknowledge the fact that the carpenters did show up today. And every year, we are allowed to have three blue skies, which are basically the goals for the year that we'd like staff to implement. And I promise you right now that one of mine is going to be the pre-quals for next year, in, for the carpenters. Okay, so a couple, so I'm just going to answer the questions. Those are, thank you for answering those questions, Alex, I appreciate it. So I am here, and I would like to do a threshold of $3 million. I'd like to move forward with this. I don't know where my colleagues are on this matter, but me personally, I really think that the county was able to implement something similar to this. And we've seen other cities of our size do it, as Matt discussed. So I'd really like to see a threshold of $3, $3 million. But if I don't have support on this council, and we do go project specific, there are a couple of things that I'd like to make sure that were included. If we do project specific, I would like to see a sunrise clause added, where we examine expanding to all projects within maybe five or 10 years, depending on how our budget is looking. The other item is that if we do do project specific, I do want to make sure that there is no exit provision included in the language for, for that, for the CWA. So that's where I am.
Councilmembers, where could be?
I promise I'll limit my questions. I guess, one thing I was curious about is, how does the city intend to collect and analyze, you know, data required during a learning period, if we pursue that? Because you said in the presentation, you would leverage the unions, but what does it actually look like?
I think, excuse me, I think that's something we'd have to definitely talk about with the, through the negotiation process, is what data can be provided and is available. We did hear from some of the agencies that we talked to, that it was difficult for them to get city-specific data, that they were, the building trades, and this is in Santa Clara County, so a different group, but they were willing to provide more county-level data in terms of, of people employed and things like that, but not city-specific. So I think that's part of what we'd have to explore, is what data can we really get to be able to have this data-driven approach, to really look at what are the local impacts of this. So obviously, we'd have data in terms of, you know, the bids that we get, and what the prices are, and things like that. And if we have to, you know, if we had a provision where if it was zero or one bids that we rebid it, that we could then see how things change when you do that. So there's some of that data that we definitely have available. But in terms of what data we could get, in terms of impacts on local workforce and whatnot, I think that's something that we'd have to talk about with the building trades, in terms of what's available, and what they're willing to provide.
Thank you for that. And then, just on that note, so if we're talking about, you know, a certain number of projects, realistically, like, how many projects can staff support if we were to like, come back in two years and revisit this? Like, how many do we think we can get done?
Yeah, I think it depends which projects, you know, we ended up putting into the process. Obviously, the negotiation process itself is going to take some time. So there's some projects, you know, that, depending on where they are on the, in the horizon, in terms of being shovel-ready, you know, we'd have to see where we're at the end of the negotiation process. But I think that, you know, we probably wouldn't want to have a list of projects that's going to take us out, you know, 20 years, that we'd probably want to try to pick projects that are in that, you know, five to 10-year horizon of things that are going to be built. So I think it's going to depend on, on, you know, some of the things that have to happen in terms of council approving the next capital budget, you know, in terms of what we put forward, based on the direction council gave us on the comprehensive facilities assessment. But I think there are, excuse me, there are projects that we talked about, like Fire Station 27, that I envision that that's a project that could come to fruition in that five to 10-year timeframe, in terms of building and branding a fire station. Same thing with MLK Resiliency Center. So there are definitely projects that fit within that timeframe. Another one that's on the horizon, that's coming up sooner potentially, is the Fashion Island Boulevard, 19th Avenue, that's a $25 million project. So that's something that also, I think, could potentially be put on the list.
Okay, so, just, so I understand, so if we were to come back as a council, to kind of look at progress being made, if we did a learning period, in say, three years, do you think we'd have enough statistically useful data in three years, or we'd have to wait five to 10, like?
I think it's going to depend on which projects go on the list, and when those projects actually go forward, in terms of going out to bid and going into construction. So if the projects that were selected are not going to be going forward for, you know, that five-year time period, then we probably aren't going to have data within three years. So I think that's part of what we need to look at, is what projects make sense to include as projects in the near term. And if there are ones that are longer out, then they may not be the right ones to include in this.
So I think a good example is the city of, city of Mountain View, just south of here. They went ahead with five project-specific, a CWA with five learning projects. And I believe the council approved their CWA in 2023. We're now at the end of 2025, and they literally just received their first bid under their CWA for the shoreline facility. So that kind of tells you, you're looking at probably two, three years out for your first project. But similarly, like what we have with our wastewater treatment plant, we can tell you what's going good, what's not going good. And I think that's information we can bring back to the council, if we need to refine this further, and make tweaks based off of the project experience.
Yeah, I just bring that up, because obviously councils turn over and things change. And so we want to make sure if we are pursuing this, that we're actually getting some valuable learnings, and really, you know, trying to expand. Like, I actually really like what Councilmember Fernandez suggested around a sunrise provision. They do want to make sure that we bring, you know, labor back into city. So I think for now, I, I would be supportive of, of number one. And number two, I think we should take a project-specific approach, and make sure that we're really getting data. In terms of projects, you know, I agree with the ones Lisa mentioned, but I want to make sure we're not limited, you know, just to that, and that we have a really good plan going forward. Thank you.
So just clarifying, you're okay with the five learning projects?
For now.
For now, got it.
Thank you, through the mayor. So just to try to close the loop on this, how, how did staff arrive at the number five projects? Is that, is that, you know, what we sort of think right now is, can we just say more about how, how we, how we arrived at five for the, the initial number of project, for a project-based model?
Yeah, I think it's just generally based on information we saw from some of the other entities. That's what Mountain View had. I think the Community College District had seven or nine. We thought it was a reasonable amount of projects to put forward, given the size of our city. And this is a new thing for us to, to learn from five projects.
Okay, thank you. If, if we, Councilmember Diaz Nash had a question about a termination clause, and how it might apply in a project-based model. I was just curious that if, and, and, you know, we heard that the more likely scenario in which that takes place would occur perhaps before the project begins. If we were in a project termination situation like that, could we explore negotiation on another project instead? Could we maybe have language in this negotiation that might allow for an alternative to, to be considered?
That would be up for council direction. And that would be, you know, something that we'd have to bring into a negotiation.
Okay, I'll just note, so I don't forget, that that's something I would be interested in. And on the issue of double benefits, so-called in our discussion, is this also something that we could potentially address within negotiations? Because it seems to me like, if there were a, a, a non-union portion of a project that, you know, happened to offer a benefits plan that might be seen as providing similar benefits, is there way, is there some way to, you know, flatten this potential tension and avoid something of a, of a double payment?
I would assume so. I mean, this is all, I think, a negotiation process. So I think if council gives us direction, that that's one of the guiding principles that you'd like to include in a negotiation process, I think we can bring that to the table. I think it would be a question of defining, you know, what is an equivalent sort of benefits package that would be provided by an entity, and how's that, you know, so the devil's in the details, but I think it's all a negotiation process. So I'd expect that we could do that.
Thank you. So to the questions provided, I would say firstly, that I support staff attempting to negotiate a CWA with the SMC BCTC. I, I do generally concur with the recommended guiding principles. I heard some concerns with a termination clause. And, you know, I think there was, let's see, I'm trying to remember if there were other things that were concerns that I heard. But to me, I'm thinking that some of the concerns I heard like a termination clause seemed to me to potentially be ones we could mitigate with a well-negotiated project-based agreement. Like, I guess, you know, for example, maybe we can select some projects that we feel, as was indicated in the staff report, that it may be more likely to have multiple bidders. Or we've had a history of having multiple bidders, such that we wouldn't feel too much of a risk to have a reduction in bidders get us into a point where we might want to have a termination of some sort of agreement. That, to me, I think is, is my mindset as we look at this. I would prefer a project-specific approach for that reason. You know, I, I think five projects sounds at once reasonable and arbitrary. So I would defer to staff through the negotiation process to home in on high-value projects that, I guess in my mind, would be able to get started within a reasonable amount of time, I think as Director Fabi was, was indicating, so that we could begin this process with a project, and, and get some data, and come back with some learnings, rather than get latched on to projects that might seem like the biggest, best ideas at the moment, but might end up taking too long to complete, or present other risks and issues that I think might impede the potential success of this. I, I'm, I'm excited to be, oh, before I forget, I also heard at least one council member mention interest, I think more than one, in ensuring that this is an agreement that would not just be limited to building trade affiliated unions, but rather allow for the carpenters to be a part of this, and other potential similar organizations that meet, you know, appropriate requirements, but may not be affiliated at this time, so that we can try something that is, that is open to everybody who's willing to participate in this agreement, and its needs and its requirements. But I do see this as a great investment opportunity in our local economy, and local workforce, and, and apprenticeship opportunities. I do think I would want the, this to be something of a pilot, though, that, that we do revisit after we get some, some good data. So at the moment, I'm not necessarily as big on a sunrise clause. I, I would, I would, I would believe in the process and hope that the data could speak for itself. I think those are my comments at this time.
Thank you for all of your comments. To start, I am in agreement with number one, that we should attempt to negotiate a CWA. A few questions that I have. One, you know, I see this magic number of five. It, to kind of echo what Deputy Mayor said, it seems a little arbitrary. When I look at the last four years, we've got seven, five, four, and six major projects that happened. So in that respect, you know, maybe five is, is a fine number, in that, that seems to be about what we'll do in a year, or, you know, two years? I mean, how, how does that, sorry?
From a learning vantage point, I think it's for staff to be able to handle, I'm just trying to deliver on the expectations of the council to do a really good job. It's something I have been harping on since day one with this. I want to manage it, and be able to provide the best staff work, and the best data for this council. And I believe the five project threshold, when I talk with staff, that's what I believe we can deliver on, and be able to provide good data. So that's why you have the five learning project threshold. And these would be high-value projects. That's something that we're looking at as well. And so that's what we would bring forward in any type of negotiation.
Great. And to go along that, or go along that line, do we envision that that will take two, three years to get through? Or what, how long do you think it'll take us if we go with the number five?
So with the five projects, it could be anywhere between, I would say, three to probably eight years, in between the projects that I'm looking at, as sort of targeting the high value. Probably the closest or the fastest one that we'd be looking at is the $26 million project, which is Fashion Island. That one would be probably the first one right out of the gate. And that's a big project.
Okay, that sounds good.
To learn from.
Do we envision that at some point, we may pivot and go from project-specific to, you know, ending a beta or period, and, and then going to a threshold-specific plan?
So that would be up to the council. I think we would So that would be up to the council. I think we would bring back the data so that you can make an informed decision as a council.
And when do you think that we would get data back? So would we look at this again in two years and then again in four or?
It's not so much years. It'd be, if we're going project-specific, it would be right after the project. So if our first project in the next couple of years is the Fashion Island project, we would come back to the council with an update of how it worked out.
Okay, which still opens it up to being pivoting, so.
That's up to this council, yes.
Excuse me, didn't get through five projects. We got through three and we said, okay, this is what we want to do going forward. We can pivot.
The council at any time can pivot.
Very good. Thank you. I would, I would like to move forward with this, and I like the idea of starting in a beta phase with, with five projects. I'm not beholden to five projects, as I, as I said, but it sounds like a good point to start with. If they don't, I would, the other thing I would say was that I don't know that they all need to be large projects. Like, if you found a median project, a medium project might also be interesting just to see how that project pans out or plays out differently than a high-value project. But what are your thoughts on?
So my thoughts are that at a minimum, just like you saw with the San Mateo County negotiated CWA here recently, I would approach at least a $3 million project or above.
Okay, thank you. So is that median, medium-sized or?
For us, I'd say that is medium-sized.
Okay, well then, that, that'll work. All right, so the other things I would say was that I'd like us to make sure that as we negotiate, we are looking to help a percentage of target work, targeted workers, for second chance workers. We're also focusing on local workforce. I think that's very important. I also think that we should make sure that in addition to using the guiding principles that have been defined, that we use lessons learned, for example, from our wastewater treatment plant, to make sure that we are actively doing things the right way and making it a win for not just all of our union brothers and sisters, but also for us as a city. I would recommend that if by chance we did have a project with only one bid, that we would be able to reopen that up without. But again, I think that that'll be part of the negotiation, right? So it doesn't have to be defined now. And I would also be in support of making sure that the carpenters do have access to being able to participate in this process. And that's, that's all my answers.
So I'm gonna go ahead and kind of go over just what I've heard, recap. So I've heard a majority to move forward, or I've heard unanimously all of you to say move forward with attempting to negotiate a CWA with the building trades group. And then we're looking at project-specific, we're looking at a beta period of five projects. We are looking at, sorry, my phone was talking to me, five betas, five beta projects. And then what I heard is that from a termination standpoint, if the project doesn't come to fruition, then have an alternative. Do I have nodding heads on that to look at that? I'm seeing one, two, three, okay, to, to provide that as well. And then I think I have the direction that I need to move forward.
Okay, very good.
And the carpenters, you said having a, they're able to join into this agreement as well.
Yep. Okay, and I also heard from a fellow council member that we will hear that as a blue sky item, so.
Okay, if they don't make it in here, then look at the blue sky and I'm.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm seeing nodding heads all the way. Okay.
All right.
Three, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. This special session is adjourned. Thank you all for coming out tonight.